Ms. Jordan. Mr. Lamb. Ms. Lamb. Mr. Michael. Mr. Schloss. Ms. Shear. Mr. Spicer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought about Ms. Jordan because she had a birthday a few days ago. And I'm sort of limited in my mobility and I don't have any cookies.
Oh, that's fine.
But I think I'll be able to get some for the Mexican event if you saw it. Then we don't want it.
Thank you.
All should be going to executive session. With discussion, in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Standing? Reconvening in public session, we have one resolution coming out of executive session. Resolution number 2019-BOE16. Be resolved that the superintendent is hereby authorized to direct a comprehensive psychiatric and/or psychological examination and evaluation of employee number 718 in accordance with the provisions of section 913 of the education law. And be a further resolved that the board hereby directs that employee number 718 submit their medical records, if any, to the extent and for the time determined by the examining physicians to the board-designated examining physician or physicians at or before such examination or evaluation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. And unanimously, aye. Okay, now is the time for the first opportunity for public participation. If anyone would like to address the board, the time limit is two minutes. Please come forward to the microphone and you may or may not state your name. Anyone want to address the board? Approval of minutes, minutes of the April 28th, August 28th, 2019.
Seven minutes.
For meeting. So move second. Any corrections or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Announced and adopted. Superintendent's report. Dr. Pedaliro.
Thank you, Mr. Schloss.
I'm going to see. Here.
So we have two items on the superintendent's report for this evening. The first is a really brief back-to-school report, being that it's the first day of school. So we'll have more extensive and more data for later on. But so today is our first day of school. Our students all arrived and were delivered home safely. About 6,500 Kingston City School District students attended today. But I think the thing that people talked about most in any board members joining was the opening of our pre-K center over at Mahar Elementary School, which is now just Mahar Pre-K and Administrative Center. We have 72 students attend that class, that program. And just to give you an idea of a little bit about what's going on there, we have two students there who speak Arabic. We have 10 students there who speak Spanish, one student who speaks Kujabi, one who speaks Urdu, one who speaks Bengali, and one who speaks Kechi. So we have seven languages being spoken in our pre-K program over there with 72 students. As I said before, we're hoping that there'll be an extension to that, to another 36 students later in the year, probably around January, if we're successful in pursuing the grant that we're looking at to extend that. So we're getting ready for the two other classes, maybe for January. So we're excited about the start of that program. I know that Mr. Verge, Resonville, Dr. Pelcello, and I run and announce a lot of schools today. It's popular with a lot of teachers and a lot of students. But I don't think any more is entertaining as the one that Dr. Pelcello was carrying around in the morning. Who was crying hysterically. But that was, it's all part of it, it's all part of the experience. Again, the usual first-day issues, no matter how hard you plan or how much you try to time things, there's always going to be, those first couple of days, there's going to be those bumps. There's going to be a bus stop miss, there's going to be a bus that comes in late. There's going to be a schedule at the high school or the middle school that is wrong. It's going to happen. I hate to say this because I like to think that we can make everything perfect every single time, but it's hard to build into the bus run how many kindergartens, how long moms are going to hug their kindergartner before they put them on the bus, then to really make that timing. So if you had 10 kindergartners on a bus and 10 different stops and two minutes per parent, that's 20 extra minutes that that bus driver really wasn't expecting to have to do the run, brings that school bus to the school that much later. So I will say, given all of that, we had a pretty smooth start. So I'm really excited, pleased with the work that our building and district administrators did and this also directors. We take care of all that stuff in the background that we think just works because it works. But if it doesn't work, so does people do that work. So we're happy to walk through a good start and we look forward to a really productive and exciting school year. So a good segue into a productive and exciting school year would be to go with my goals for 2019, 2020. The board all received some draft of these goals last meeting, which was last week. So I know most of you saw them, I won't read them to you one by one. Stuff we did put together, I think it's an opportunity for some discussion and questions and also pull up to see these goals. We have 11 goals and I tried to categorize them so the board could kind of see how we kind of see where I was taking and planning around this. First, always, always my first goal is to support our DCF goals, our district comprehensive improvement plan. And my job around that, you know, our teaching and learning team really does the work here. They put together their goals and their active steps and really my job is to make sure that they have the resources that they need to achieve these goals. And those resources aren't just about money, they're about time, they're about people, and they're about opportunity. So that is first and foremost and the thing that really has the most impact on our academic program. Facilities, so I guess that's sort of categorized things. Facilities, we've been working a lot on facilities, seen this seven years since I've been here, as you all know, but there's always more work to be done. Old buildings always have something new to fix. So one of the things that we talked about a few weeks ago was the bidding process for our most recent five-year plan. Unexpectedly high bids, having to go back to the drawing board and take a look at what we were going to do with the $16 million that our voters approved. So we want to go back to the drawing board, we directed our architects and engineers and construction management team to go back. And I think one of my goals, important goal, would be to see that be rethought out, revisioned, and create an opportunity to do the most we can with the money that we have. We don't want to do half jobs. So we could have looked at that $16 million, kept it in three buildings, and done a little bit here and a little bit there and a little bit somewhere else. But we would much rather take that $16 million, focus it on one or two schools, and do the job right, and then come back to that third school. So that's really in the direction we push the architects and BDF. So by September 18th, which is not very far from now, we're going to present to the board a new plan for that $16 million. Also, we're talking about the five-year plan, well, as we get, it's kind of how this, the rhythm of this goes. We're about to start building based on our last five-year facilities review, and now we're starting our five-year facilities review again. There could, you know, we've been heard from the state that they may be changing this rhythm, and maybe we won't be up for it this year, and maybe we'll be put off, but we're not sure. So as far as I, if I don't know, I'm going with the old schedule and assuming that this year we will have that. So by the end of the school year or beginning of June, I will come back and forth with a plan for our five-year building review, what we need to do. You've all seen that review, it's extensive, it's really every building, what needs to be done, and we really break it out by priority. What could we need to do in one year, two years, three years, four years? Budget. You know, this is always a goal, this is always something we look at, but I think it's really important that we be very explicit about this and very public about this and to make sure that we are holding ourselves accountable, in this case, holding myself accountable, for preparing the budget and working with our business department and with Mr. Olson, to make sure we prepare a budget that is equitable in its distribution of resources to all of our schools. And again, remember, equitable is not equal. Equitable is equitable, making sure everyone gets what they need in those buildings. Does that mean some buildings get more and some don't, some get a little less? Yes, that's what it means. That's what equitable is all about, we give schools what they need to achieve what they need to achieve, given the situation they're in. So I think this is always a goal, but I wanted to be explicit about this and let the board know and community know and actual administrative know that this is a goal for us this year and we will accomplish it. Climate and culture. We've been talking about climate and culture, this has been a focus. Yesterday, we spent our whole day talking climate and culture with our coaches. Really good training around trauma and formative education, and it was just, it was excellent. Not as long as we would like it today, but it will be, we're going to extend it. Two weeks ago, the administrative team, the entire administrative team, building and district administrators underwent, and some board members actually, underwent two days of trauma and formative training, and we're going to extend that throughout the school year, so it's one of our goals. And now it's one of my goals. So we'll make sure that we have, first of all, we're going to address the restorative practices issue. We've been talking about it, we've changed our code of conduct, we've really kind of tinkered around the edges. So we don't want to tinker around the edges anymore. We are going to focus in on our middle schools and we're going to put together a comprehensive restorative justice program, really ideally just a restorative practices program, and with embedded training, upfront training, and real expert resources available to our teachers, to our administrators, and then creating experts within our buildings to make sure we can continue this moving forward. So my thing is, this is the year. This is the year we're going to make this happen. We have already identified the group that we'll be working with, this is the New York State Defenders Association, which is also the association, the group is working with the county. We are, on the 23rd and 24th of September this year, will be about 30 members of our staff and 10 members from the county will be working, will be going through a training, a restorative justice training, to get them ready for this. And then we will have, like I said, embedded coaches, embedded coaches in the middle schools helping us several days a week, helping, teaching us how to do, you know, restorative practices, teaching us how to have the restorative conferences, conducting kind of role-play restorative conferences, or in some cases, if we really need an expert, we have a situation, doing that for us. And they're also, we're also going to have a hotline, they'll be ready to answer our calls anytime of day and be able to come down to their work with us. So we're excited about this opportunity, we're able to fund it through a grant. So we received the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant for this year. I was at a conference in July and I was informed that we're going to receive it next year also. So we took the entire grant, which is $100,000 a year, and we're investing it in this initiative, that's it. So we will be, you know, we're really committed to making this happen this year and extending it into next year so we can even become better at this. Our culturally responsive education program, looking at our disproportionality, and we're committed to that. It's been three, it's been four years, so committed to moving it for our fourth year. And we'll, again, one of the goals is to make sure that we keep moving forward and keep looking at this data and keep changing, looking at our practices to change that disproportionality issue. Pre-K and DOD. So we already started, the first thing I talked about, but we're working with the teaching and learning department, look at our pre-K, see how we're doing, analyze it, make sure that we're reaching the students that we want to reach, and make sure we're seeing the outcomes from this program that we want to see. Now, this will be a few years before we really, really dive into this data, but we'll have some initiative data and we'll know how effective we're being delivering this program. It's going to be very difficult to do the lightened model, I think it's great, but it's also, there's also a lot of challenges there. So by January this year, I'm going to give you kind of a first presentation of how we're doing. Really, that might be a lot about enrollment, that might go out about attendance, that might be a lot about what we're trying. And then June, a little more about what we're actually doing and what results we're seeing. Board priorities, again, the board didn't really come to me with these list of priorities, but I think just from our conversations that we've had over the last even more than, more than maybe two years, some of these things I think we've talked a lot about, and again, want to be explicit, they talk about how are we going to really do this or really investigate this. So I think putting it here is kind of without that. So now if we don't do it, or if I don't do it, you know, there's, I got to answer for that. So I want to make sure that we put these things out there. Working together with the teaching and learning department and human resource department to improve our program to retain and recruit diverse faculty, staff, and administration. We've done okay, but those commercials that say where it says okay, it's just okay, okay, it's just okay. We need to do better. We had an initial plan two years ago, we did some of it, some of it worked, some of it didn't. We need to rethink that, and by February, initially, we'll come back with a new plan. Then we'll have probably still some of the old stuff that we're working on. We're still committed to today's teachers tomorrow's students. No, today's students, tomorrow's teachers. We're still committed to that program, we're still committed to Ben Perkins and her team, and we love what they're doing with our students. We've actually expanded that program down into the middle schools this year. So we really like the things they're doing with kids, even if they don't become teachers. We still like what they're doing with kids, they're providing mentorship, they're providing workshops, they're providing focus for a lot of our students. So we love them and we're going to keep moving there. So it'll include some of that, but we need to, we need to really do a little bit of a better job, we will. Looking at our coaching model, we've talked about the coaching model with teaching and learning committee a few times, and we've actually done a few presentations here for the board as a whole. We've been five, five or six years in this program, I think it's a good opportunity for us to take a look and take the temperature. I'd ask the Kingston Teachers Federation and the, and our administrative union to come together to be part of this task force, to look at what we're doing, how we're doing, what needs to be changed, what can stay the same, how we can kind of just re-energize this program. I think we think it's valuable, the embedded coaching model is best practice as any way you look, but doesn't mean we're doing it perfectly, and I think we can really look to improve. Working with the principals and teachers and central administration together, we'll get all our ideas, and we'll make recommendations to the board for changes next year. Couple other board priorities. We talked about looking at when our five-year-olds enter, I'm looking over the team, I can't see, so I'm moving back. When our five-years, five-year-olds are entering elementary school, some of them are four, depending on the dates. Looking at changing those, so every one of our kindergarteners is a five-years-old when they come into kindergarten. We did start the pre-K program, we have a focus on early education right now. Research tells us that's where our focus should be, so we're doing that. I think this is, this is an idea that's happened in other places, deserves our research and our attention to see, will this benefit our students? And then we're going to do that, and by June, we'll have that out there. Also, early in the spring, we're going to look at the feasibility of later start time. Again, something that's based on research, that has been talked about in every education, you know, circle you walk in, they'll talk about later start times for our secondary students. So I think it's time for us to bring that research together, along with the logistics and the impact they'll have in Kingston City School District, and present those. Whether there'll be recommendations around that at that point, no, I think that'll be up to us as a group to decide, I'm not necessarily, and maybe I will, but I want to make sure that we have all the information, all the research, and again, all the practical impacts it would have on the Kingston City School District. And that's all. Do you have any questions? Ms. Charter.
I don't have a question really, I'm so excited though that you're using the money from the grant to actually start the restorative practice so that we have more of that going on, you know, the conferencing and everything, I think is so critical, and I'm really excited to hear that we're not just talking about it anymore, so thank you so much.
And I know we've, there's been frustration, and might not be, but I've been as frustrated as you have been around how slow this is on. And I know the people I've, the experts that I've spoke to around restorative practice say, this is a slow process, but it still feels like maybe it's a little slower than it should be. We're all frustrated by the pace of this, so I think, again, putting it out there, getting that money didn't hurt, that's for sure. But using that way to focus in on one thing. And I know, I talked to Mr. Shider and Mr. Starell, Resonville, and they agree that this is where we should spend that money and this is where we'll concede a little impact, so we're excited.
I'm excited too that the school is going to be working with the county because they're the same children that we're talking about, and I think that the school can provide some guidance there. And I think that it'll make it really meaningful, that money that's coming into the county, what's happening also with the school district can really impact these children that we want to keep getting in that pipeline that these.
And it's very intentional that we chose the New York State Defenders Association to do our training because they were the group that the county had chosen to do their training and they're really helping them implement. Very successful in Albany area, very successful with Spunecton, the Albany City Schools also uses the same group. They've shown that they can really make this happen, so we're excited to be speaking the same language. And I met with the county executive a week or so ago, and that was one of the things we talked about, was, you know, using that restorative justice center to do these kind of things and using that restorative justice center for, to serve all of our students and making sure we are speaking the same language. And more of the keys to this is, once we get good at it, I guess, or once we really are better at it, I should say, getting parents to understand, getting the community to understand what restorative practices are. Restorative practices doesn't mean people get off scot-free, it doesn't mean there's no consequences. It actually means we're just taking a different angle at working on problems that our students are having. So I think the county feels the same way and using the same language and meeting with parents and them knowing that, not only school, but the county, and I actually even spoke to the mayor about it yesterday, about getting the city involved, will be great for everyone.
You mentioned the preschool a couple times, I'd just like to congratulate you and the board members that were on the board when that was the plan and that was the goal, because it was wonderful this morning. Just seeing those kids go in and knowing that that is going to make a difference in that graduation rate is just in, what is it, 2033? But it's still going to make an incredible difference, so congratulations to all of you.
It was, it was great, and actually to see them, to see them, many of the students came in, several, not many, several came in and they were crying as they're coming in, and as they were leaving, there was one little girl in the classroom, and she is crying. And the teacher said, she's crying because she made a friend and he gets to go on the bus as she does. So the students were crying for different reasons, perhaps because they weren't coming in, they cried because they didn't want to leave. So, so you're already building those relationships all in one day. Is it true?
Sure.
I'm very happy to see, well, first of all, the pre-K, that was absolutely marvelous, that spawned me kind of fruition. But the goals that actually speak to equity of opportunity in terms of taking a look at what's offered to the kids and disproportionality in terms of discipline and, you know, going to full implementation of restorative justice, I think it's wonderful. And the, you know, attention to culturally responsive environment. And having said that, I'm going to be a pinhead right now. The board rates you usually in May, and you set deadlines in June, and we've run into that in the past. So do you maybe want to give us preliminary reports in May before we do that? Because I think it's unfair to evaluate you for something that hasn't yet come to fruition, but you haven't given us the report. But if you were to give us a preliminary report, if that was okay with everybody, you know, to date kind of thing.
Yes, I could do that.
And did you have?
Yeah, I was, when I was strategic in when I was doing it, but I wasn't strategic around my own evaluation. I appreciate you bringing that up. Ms. Duncan.
I'm sorry that I missed the pre-K. So I just, this is a really wonderful list of goals, it's very ambitious. I appreciate all the different topics from facilities to climate to later school start plans and all the things and brand ideas that we have had that resulted in some really great things here and now that's both for the other brand ideas that we have. But I wanted to focus for a second on climate and culture. As other board members have said, I also appreciate the focus in the elementary, in the middle schools and bringing that grant and focusing on the restorative practices and embedded coaching, I mean, that is, that's exactly where we are and it's exactly what we need. This second goal talks about the implementation of cultural responsive education and disproportionality program that was, that we began earlier and was really focused around our work with TACD with MIU. And I'm wondering, given that we're not going to be working with them anymore, what that looks like, in particular for the other schools that are, you know, the elementary schools and the high schools that aren't part of the funding program.
Yeah, we haven't picked out exactly how we're going to do this. Again, we are, we are taking a little bit of a turn as far as, you know, our work around this. We have pursued a, another facilitator. We're waiting, and I'll probably have more for you on that next, the next meeting. We're pretty confident about what we're doing, very excited about it. And actually, just to give you background, there was a New York State Teachers, New York State United Teachers was awarded Kingston a grant to participate in some training last year. So all of our teacher mentors and all of our mentees participated, and Mr. Verge participated in these trainings around cultural responsive education and our disproportionality. The feedback from that, not only from our teachers and mentors and mentees, but also from the other districts involved, has been phenomenal. We've been lucky enough that John has established a relationship with this group and this. Yes. So we're excited to bring him down to work with our team around this issue. We're just trying to pin down dates, and, but then, once we do that, we'll, I'll communicate that to him.
And will this be like the, the meeting that we had with TACD with the leadership team?
Yeah, there may be, there may be a little bit of change in how we do it, but we may look at some leadership team and then some building level stuff, so it's, so it's kind of mixed it up. I mean, a lot of what we did with, with MIU was around creating kind of ambassadors and then going back to the schools. So we want to do a little bit of that, but we also want to bring the train right to the entire school in some of these cases as well. So we're looking at some different models around this, but just based on what we, what the feedback we got from the NICEA grant and that presentation, we think this is the right way to go for us. If we reach the place where we needed to go as far as working with MIU, I think this is the next step.
And I see like your little red underneath everything is kind of, I guess, how you're going to report to us?
Yes.
So I hope that in those quarterly reports under climate and culture, that it's not just a focus on the numbers and suspensions, but that we also get to hear a little bit of the texture and the nuance of what was actually happening with the embedded coaching that was actually happening and see how we can, stuff like that.
You are. Mr. Michael?
First of all, I mentioned Kritikar at Mahar School. I put us with the board five years ago when we said our goal to invest, I would say, to the Kritikar. And early education, that was more important with a smaller investment, we would save a lot more money down the road with special students. So congratulations to the board and Dr. Pedaliro. Now, my question about the budget, now, I have an effect on the budget. The equity in buildings, you're supposed to be reporting the state this year for the first time. What is that, two?
Three days ago.
Oh, you sent that?
Five days ago, yeah.
We sent it out?
Yeah, we sent it out on the 30th.
Okay, so I just hope you doesn't have too much input that the budget, if we.
I think, you know, we're, based on the state's requirements and how we report it, we feel pretty, very confident that we're in compliance with that. But we, you know, this isn't a compliance exercise as far as we're concerned, we're going to be in compliance, but we don't want to be in compliance. We want to make sure we're doing what's right by our district, not necessarily by this, you know, by the equation set up by the state. So we're going to do this a little more, we're going to be a little more personal about it. And look, we really want to make this beyond, like I said, you know, an exercise in compliance. Ms. Spicer.
I want to add that I'm very excited about this whole district's past progress and also Dr. Pedaliro's goals in recruitment and retention of diverse faculty. It is, and I've done it in other districts and tried, it is a desperate effort because most college students of color don't go into education, so that's strike one. And then, most college graduates of color in education want to be by a very large city. So that's strike two for small city schools, Kingston's got a little leg up on that. But I will say this, that you put it in writing and that you made it a goal makes it more achievable. And if you don't try, you get nothing. And if you don't try, you get nothing. As a matter of fact, if you don't try, you lose what you have. So, I'm, I'm really proud, very excited to see how all of this, how we are all going to continue to be successful in this endeavor.
Thanks, President. I think an important piece that is lost in that goal is recruit and retain. So, it's, it's recruit and retain, you know, to make sure that, that, you know, the people we get here, we can keep here and we do the things that make them feel like belong here. You know, I think, like I said, we've done, we've done okay. We've done okay. And, but I think we can do better. And we can also make sure that, you know, our students, if we want to have a diverse teaching population and administrative population for our students, we also have to make sure we can retain the people that we are able to recruit to our district. So, that's, that's part of that goal. I think it's important.
Well, I just like to agree with what my colleagues on the board have said. I think every comment is a very, a very excellent. Set as goals as they are.
Okay, I hope we have a clap for all of you. But, thank you. And just before I leave the superintendent's board, I do want to recognize, we have a young man who's here today who is earning his Eagle Scout. Where are you, how are you, where are you on the, on the path?
I'm getting a couple merit badges that I have to finish up.
So, one of them is attending school board meetings, which is the torture merit badge. And there are a few people know that Mr. Spicer is an Eagle Scout. That concludes the superintendent's.
I've known him for 25 years. I have a resolution that's not on the agenda. Include it. BOE, or 2019 BOE 17. The Kingston City School District Board of Education approves the superintendent's goals 2019, 2020 has presented. And these goals will be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting.
Salute.
Start.
Any discussion? Everybody moved it. All voters, please.
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, we move to Board of Education. And our first item is the Board of Education draft goal. And I would ask Dr. Jacobus if she will present it.
Sure. Excuse me. We, the subcommittee that came together in this past half, shared, we worked on the draft goal. And we started with substantive areas that we felt that we wanted to address and that we felt were priorities to the board and that had been required to the board for a long time. And we shifted in the goals and of course argued over language and stuff like that. So, you can all now contribute to that. So, some of them are goals that we've had, or, well, actually, they all kind of build on goals that we've had in the past. It's always kind of built over and done substantively. Each one there is a theme and then we can talk about the substance. We can also wordsmith them, which we've all learned, we've set this kind of that. The first is about supporting the DCEP and supporting the superintendent's goals. That's always a priority perhaps, of course, because typicals and the superintendent that they can support DCEP. And so, putting corporate resources and supporting those. Second, we have promoting equity in academic opportunity. Extra for education, social, emotional learning and discipline practices in the Kingston City School District. That's something that obviously shows up in the superintendent's book. Also, as part of the DCEP, but it's something that we have talked about before that's been very important to us, that we have equity and opportunity for all of our students and that that spans all areas. So, not just academics, but also educational programs and discipline practices and social and emotional learning families. Third is really monitoring academic performance of our students. Fourth is Board of Education recruiting learning opportunities about equity and race and racial diversity, continuing what we have started in the past year with book studies around books, so you don't talk about race. I think this year maybe we'll look at white fragility. So, to continue our own education and our own conversations around race and equity. Fifth is about our facilities projects, do the five-year capital plan, but also the Kingston High School. We could take them apart off that list. And then six, we have our outreach to community groups with coffee and conversation and really being common sense of having those coffee and conversation opportunities with a whole range of different communities and all of our institutes at different times and different locations to make them accessible to all of our constituents. So, we'll hopefully go ahead to the discussion.
I just have one question. I know that we're going for smart goals and there, for most of these, you know, we're supporting goals of superintendent, which I think is totally appropriate. But there's no notation about the timeframe in which we're going to do it. And of course, it's the academic year. So, I, and it's not appropriate for all of them, I don't think. But should we add a notation about referring to the anti-antiquiated calendar and the reports from administration to any of them? And for the, for the last one, I just said as a word monthly because, or at least monthly. Because we have tried to do it at least monthly with coffee conversations in the past and that will cover the timeframe.
So, where would you, where would you, I'd say.
I, I think I would, in, in number two, you know, and this, we would actually monitor it via the reports too, and two, three, and that, just two. Would you think that was cool? Or would you think that was number three?
So, we'll just say at the end of each of those, so the three reports. Reports to the board will be added to the annotated calendar. So, just reports to the board.
As per the annotated calendar. Actually, wait, yeah, as per the annotated calendar. Because actually, it's, it's fine. And number two is fine the way it is. Say through superintendent's reports to BOE, as per the annotated calendar. And in number three, receive academic performance reports. Unfortunately, food data about all those approaches and strategies for improvement. I don't know if you agree that as per the annotated calendar, but that's when the superintendent's report goes. And that's how we're receiving them, as per the annotated calendar.
So, the annotated calendar being the schedule that lays out the reporting.
Yes, that's the one that appears on the board page that gives the specifics about the topics of the meetings for the year. And I know Mr. Shire is important in that.
We also, we just, Camille, I shouldn't say we, Camille just put together the principal's schedule for their presentation so we can have between the goal reports and the principal's, so we know what's coming out of the board.
I have a question.
Okay, and then at number six, when we say continue enhanced monthly outreach to the community, just add the word monthly between those two words. Is that good?
Yeah, I'd say it is monthly. There may be times where, I know you said you want to get more this year. Why don't we do it more than monthly? And yeah, who asks us? Who pays us?
Continue to enhance outreach, at least monthly.
Are there any other proposals?
Just quickly, some of these are yes or no. You need to, like, I don't see where some of them are like measurable. When I had to write my APM PR goal, it had to be measurable. I had to be able to report on it. I had to turn in all kinds of documents that this was, it's either it is, it is or it isn't. There's no, oh, we made it this far on it, like our graduation rate, we're making it, you know, each year there's a, so I just, I question, example. Number four, did we do it? Did we do it? If, if, if you answer no. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure that goes as a goal.
Well, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of controversy about goal setting and what's goal setting and what are objectives? And are goals really smart goals or are objectives smart objectives? Is the role of a, a goal should be expansive and nonspecific and we turn it over to the superintendent and the superintendent comes back with smart goals. And that's how we monitor it.
I heard Mr. Shire say, I don't, I, I know that we're probably going to have some more training on, on goal setting. However, in the past, we have been told by representatives from NISTDA that sometimes it's not possible to set a board goal that actually adheres to those parameters because they are supposed to be broad and we are also supposed to support the district and the superintendent and align our goals with them. So, sometimes they are broader, but, and we don't give any indication of how we would measure it except that we're going to monitor and oversee and certainly comment and on what we're given in terms of reports. So, I don't know how you would measure that.
I, I don't either. And I remember the discussion when we, when we were measuring the goals from last year that we felt a lot of them were just yes, no, yes. And, and I don't have a problem with that. I just don't know if we're doing what we're supposed to do.
Well, I would say my first is for goal number one, provide resources and support for the implementation of DCEP and the superintendent's goals. That's exactly what Dr. Patalino had as the first item on his goal, support DCEP. And, you know, I think the way to measure that is, if we're not doing that, we will hear back from the superintendent and from the Teaching and Learning Committee.
And hopefully, public, too.
But I think what Mr. Lamb has referred to also is like, so do we matter how well we did? So, we, so number one and number four, for example, we will do those things. Did we do them well or did we just do them? And so, there's no way to give them the language to assess whether we did them well or not. And I don't know that there needs to be. We always get stuff in that, do we, was it three or was it four? Because a three is you did it and a four, you know, so what's that, what's that space? I mean, maybe that's just the nature of the DCEP.
Or maybe we could build in, in the objectives, surveys of the board. You know, regular surveys of the board so that we do get to evaluate ourselves along the line. Essentially, we do get often anyway, like retreats. And maybe we might incorporate some of that feedback in what we consider when we evaluate our own performance.
You know, maybe in some of our, in our evaluation instrument, in some cases, it may be appropriate just to add, just to have a yes or no category. If it's, I mean, and I think that we could, you know, decide that in terms of when we construct the evaluation instrument, so we can look at that every year. I mean, what we've done for, for many years in the past is we have an instrument that was adopted, I don't know how many years ago, and we've fitted into that, you know, every year. And maybe, maybe that's not appropriate, maybe we should.
There you go. I like it because it's aligned with the superintendent's instrument. And actually, we're uneducated. I do like it.
Yeah, I want to say great work. Mrs. Sheer, if we're having a nitty-gritty, like a partial evaluation, but we can figure out by then whether we're going to be biased as an objective or a yes or a no. We can do that like at the end of the year, one or our retreats.
I think that would be appropriate. I mean, we don't have to wait until the end of the year to learn we are doing well or not well. We want to.
So, we can improve and get a raise.
I'm just looking at number two, which I think is one of the more important things that we can do. But I'm a little uncomfortable with the word promote because it's kind of nebulous. But I wonder if it would improve by, by changing, changing instead of period after KCAS2, but by monitoring and supporting the implementation. Because really, the way we can show that we're promoting it is by supporting and monitoring it. Because otherwise, there's really no way of knowing if we're.
Okay, so after, so we remove that period and.
And just say, I, monitoring and supporting the implementation. I think it makes more sense. Otherwise, otherwise you get new cheers or something.
So, what I think we should do is write up these, write up the goals as amended by our comments and put it on the agenda for the next meeting for adoption.
I would just like to thank the committee who worked on it. That's always tedious. It's tedious, but Mrs. Sheer thought of some synonyms and we did much better. I appreciate that.
I think we've met three times. And I'd have to say, I mean, I've been on some of these before. I think this was very productive. I enjoyed, I enjoyed being on it. I thank my colleagues who contributed to that joy.
I would also just suggest that we don't have Saturday coffee and conversations because they seem to be so boring to attend to.
Except the farmer's market.
Except for the farmer's market. But, but other than that, that should be the lone Saturday.
That doesn't have to be in the goal. I mean, that's just in the.
Well, I know, but if we're talking about these, I just think that it doesn't have to be. I'm not, I'm not suggesting you write it down, I'm just.
Well, I think Camille will not schedule a Saturday coffee and conversation.
Unless we do it at a football game.
With a football Friday.
Football Friday. Soccer.
Also, just thinking of football. So, the first home football game is September 27th, is it? And it's with, we'll be playing Saguertis. And it's homecoming.
I know.
I think that's really great. We'd be pretty confident it won't be snowing.
So, that is in fact a homecoming tournament?
Yeah, that would be the homecoming. I don't know what that has to do with goals, but.
Goals?
Oh, I hope we get more goals than Saguertis. Okay, moving on, board training and retreats. I think Mrs. Sheer would be an excellent board member to make the first comments about board training and retreats, and she has thought a lot about it.
Well, in recent years, we've been trying to do more board trainings and retreats. And one of the ones that I know the board loves is the January Retreat. We meet together and we actually get to iron out things and kind of take the temperature of the board at that point. And there have been wonderful, rich conversations in those retreats. We also call retreats the evaluation of superintendent. And customarily, you know, we have one at the beginning of the year when we're coming together as a new board, we have a couple new members. Then, one sometime in the fall, one in January, two in May, and then one in June for the board. And then we also have some in between. Now, last year, we did book study and. And there was a forum, I know, we had a medical issue in, in Columbia, and there were a few people innocent. But it was a rich conversation. We had the same, um, facilitators that worked with the high school. And I think we came away thinking that, you know, it was, it was a rich conversation. It should continue. I know that the high school is doing white fragility this year. And I, I think it's an excellent book. And it's one that we should, should certainly discuss. Everybody has a copy of it. I know that. But there also are summaries available online. And I think we should, um, explore getting facilitators in common with the high school. And if I'm not mistaken, they will be people who are actually employed by the district. So we would have to actually, um, create a, a request for them to come. And, you know, I would expect that they would be paid for that as well. But, um, we, we were talking about meeting at least quarterly to go through this. I'm sure they'll be meeting on a monthly basis, if not more frequently, at the high school. But, um, I think in order to do this justice, we are going to have to have some in-depth conversations. And I'm very glad to see this board courageous enough to actually take that on. There are, however, a lot of other wonderful, wonderful, um, books, uh, currently, um, in circulation. And, and please feel free to recommend any of the others. Because I think it's important that we continue to do this. Um, I think it's also important for the, the board to get together from time to time for trainings and, and to, you know, interact in ways other than we do just sit and discuss meetings. I don't know if that's what you're expecting, Mr. Schloss. That's what I expect.
That's, that's, that's a good start. One training that I would like to see us have is a, um, extension of, an expansion of a, um, segment that Mrs. Jordan and I attended last year at the NISBA conference on, on goal setting for, for boards. And, um, because I, I went through a, uh, just recently, I went through the, uh, PowerPoint presentation, uh, of it. And that's where I learned, or recall, uh, the difference between, uh, goals and SMART objectives. And the board comes out with goals and turns them over to the superintendent. And the superintendent, uh, returns with SMART objectives. And I guess he, he can, he passes that along to his administration. And, uh, you know, that's a way, that's a way to accomplish goals. You know, it's very, I remember when I first came on the board, we had, I think, I think it was when we first started. I don't think in two thousand and six, I don't think we adopted board goals. But two thousand and seven, we did. We had extensive discussion about what those differences were. And, uh, in my opinion, this session that we went to at NISBA last year was, was done by Jamie McPherson. And I thought he was really excellent. I don't think he's going to, I think if we were to use him, uh, and I talked to him when we went up to the law conference, I don't think he's going to talk to us about, uh, not using email and things like that, which a lot of trainers focus a lot of time on, it seems. And I think that we should do it, uh, in the spring. Because I think that, uh, you know, we should have a conversation about whether the board should develop goals, uh, in the spring, uh, before the teaching and learning develops DCEP goals. And the superintendent develops his goals. And, uh, and, and so that's my, that's my proposal. I would like to see that, uh, training and, I think, a four-hour training would cost eighteen hundred dollars and probably some transportation expenses. So we would consider that. We don't have to decide, uh, you know, we don't have to decide now on that. But I would like to put that on the table. Any other, uh, suggestion? So we have the January...
Are these two, um, concepts in competition? Is, are, are, are we, are we looking to have one and not the other?
In terms of one?
Well, no, no, speaking of, of retreat, um...
No, they would be, they would, they're not in competition.
They're not.
They would be spread out in the air.
And white fragility is available in, uh, in audiobooks format. If anybody would rather listen to it than read it. So, and that's available on Amazon.
And summaries too.
So it's very expansive. It's maybe hundreds of dollars.
It occurs to me when we're talking about promoting equity and, and diversity and all of that, maybe a way to promote it is to actually expand the conversation when we are talking about white fragility. If there's a group, a high school, that is studying it as well, would really be interesting to me to meet with them and get a broader perspective of what people are. I mean, there's something to be said about the board coming together and discussing it in terms of where we see it and view it in our capacity as board members. But it would also be really interesting if there was a forum, uh, that was promoted by the board for anybody who is interested in that conversation. You know, it would really have as a, maybe a culminating kind of, like, to draw in a room on the community.
Yeah, I would, I think, I, I would think that it's important, uh, that the public at some point have an opportunity to see how the board is, you know, undertaking its own professional development and training. So they know we just don't come and sit here and, you know, prove consent opportunities.
Well, and also, there's an energy and a synergy that happens when a community takes on, uh, problems like this and, and a reflection of it. And maybe it could, you know, be kind of a community event that was supported by the board. And maybe not this book, but some book, you know, some, some way that it's a positive forum, not where people come and write, but just reflect on some common thoughts that are presented. And that would be an interesting thing, actually. I don't know what you want.
I think we kind of had one of those opportunities, well, two of those opportunities last year when we showed the movie Resilience and, and The White Lie. And we are going to be showing Resilience again. Each of our buildings is going to schedule Resilience for their community, which will give another opportunity for that, that conversation and trying to open that up to the...
Is that the movie that we watched?
Yes, on Monday morning, last week.
Where's the show?
I guess...
Much in study, uh, question about last year, we exhausted our board budget, probably right after the conference. Why haven't you been meeting later on?
Well, I think we...
Did the year ever be affordable?
Well, we increased the budget, uh, I think, by a couple of thousand dollars. And this year, the, uh, NISBA conferences in Rochester rather than New York City, and the prices, the hotel prices are about half of what they are in New York City, maybe even more than that. So if, uh, six or seven of us are saving, uh, two hundred dollars each on hotel rooms, or maybe even more. I mean, that's like a, that's like a hundred and fifty dollars a night. So we're going to be there for two or three nights, so...
They're all private, they're separately managed, but... Well, maybe your doctor, Hubers, could make some of her cookies out here, so... And you could make your...
So I appreciate, so I appreciate what you just said about there being some synergy and having a board come up to talk about the topic. I don't want to lose, um, our own kind of internal work that we do together on this issue. So to me, what you're talking about is separate from these four meetings that we would have. We're really, we're kind of, okay? Because I think we have people watching that, that's a little...
No, I agree. This was a, a set, like, not either or, but an addition to it.
So I think that the plan, my understanding of the plan as we are looking at it now is that it's the four quarter, it's the quarterly meetings on, on white fragility, which Mrs. Shear gave us a copy of, gave us a copy of, um, of, of retreat in January about us and how we work together. And, you know, irony has some issues, any issues we might have moving forward. And then a retreat about, um, goal setting. So that's six. Is that kind of where we're going to do?
Oh, I should have added that, uh, Mr. Pearson, in his proposal, he stated that, uh, the meeting would have to be advertised and open to the public. So it would be, it would most, so the public, they wanted to observe.
Well, because you can't set goals, you type it in.
So I would do the...
Are you actually setting our goals?
No, he's, he was... It's a training and facilitating, and I think it's an experiential training.
Okay, but it, but it's, and it's, I don't care if it's open to the public, but it has to be open to the public even if we're probably not in the process of setting goals and not what our goals actually are.
You can have a training on how to set goals without setting goals. You know, just for how to, like, how sausage is made without actually naming the sausage.
Well, but if you're paying him eight hundred dollars and he can facilitate the writing of the goals as part of that, I think he should have to. All right, so my, my... I would just say, I don't think, I don't think that this board has done a terrible job of writing the goals at all. It's a different perspective, though. He has, he has a, a different view. It's a more global view of goals.
Six retreats, we're good.
Anyone? The next item on the agenda is coffee conversation, so...
It's not Saturday.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I know.
This car will last, this new car will last a few months longer. Well, it's not that he enjoyed the coffee he was with Mrs. Shear and Mrs. Jordan. That was, that was a little, yeah, it's kind of, uh, Mr. Parnas has been, uh, great in the last, prior years and previous years, uh, scheduled enough for us.
It's proving to be quite a challenge this year. I haven't gotten too many. Well, I haven't gotten any, actually, for coffee and conversation. I sent out letters, um, probably about three weeks ago. I haven't heard back from anybody.
Who'd you send?
What's that?
Where'd you send?
Ulster, um, immigration. I haven't heard back. Vito Real.
I spoke to him on, uh, the last year. Yeah. He said he's definitely open to it. I stopped by his place today, but he wasn't there. I will get a date from him. And so we certainly do, that was one of the more effective ones.
Yes, yeah.
And, uh, and they feel more comfortable in their own setting. And he said he definitely will do it. Yeah, so we'll get there. And I'll contact some of the other people that we had. One of the things that I think that we talk in terms of our coffee conversation, I, I, it's, it's good to have them talking to us too, but we, we should go with, um, some specific plans to share some of the things that we're doing within the district. Because a lot of people don't know all the things that we're doing. They don't come to meetings and they don't look at things. So, uh, even if we just pick one area that we wanted to, uh, to let them know what's happening, you know, within the district, and then they can raise questions about that whenever else they want.
So one important, um, is, do you remember the, the, we, we had coffee and conversation at one of the Latino churches?
Yeah, it was...
It was around.
They came with a, they came many questions about the pre-K programs. That was really important to their community. So I agree with Reverend Charles, that if we know the community and the people that we're talking to, to have kind of a mini agenda of what we'd like to talk to them about as well, Julie House, okay?
Mr. Michael?
A question for Camille. Did you reach out to the radio station? I thought that I would be able to...
No, I did not.
If you're minded, we have...
So are you doing, uh...
Okay. So I did get, um, I did reach out to the middle school principals and the high school. And they were all very receptive, thought it would be a great idea. And the high school actually suggested that we do it, um, during their potluck dinner, which is heavily attended.
So Saturday?
No, it's actually on Thursday, October tenth.
I think it's really interesting that we, I just decided, that while it was, it was good to meet the student council, that was not a representative group of our student body, at least at the high school. So to have it in an opportunity where there are more students, you know, more families and students there, that would give us really a better, um, you know, real, a better representation of...
Well, Mr. Gesico also said that he would do, uh, a student one as well later in the year. But that this would be a perfect opportunity to, you know, reach out to more, more parents.
Did you kind of boys and girls have... Because that was, that was rescheduled, but, um, even with the rescheduling, we had a cross-section of students, like elementary through high school. It was interesting.
We were lucky because they ran down to the gym and told them they couldn't play anymore.
And then we do have this farmer's market on the fifth. And I don't, you know, I'm going to need some volunteers, because that's...
On October?
Yeah, October fifth. Uh, but the October tenth, um, date that I got today actually conflicts with, um, something that Ulster Post uses during on October tenth, which I received today as well.
Yeah, actually, we're going to see the Ulster County School Boards Association. They're having their first meeting in, um, on October tenth. And, uh, they would like each district to come and bring a team and to have a, a roundtable of, uh, of each, of each district, uh, deciding on two, two things that they did well in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
I think they're going to be jealous because Casey Oins has more than anybody else there.
And, uh, one, uh, one goal that we will be working on, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. So that's, I think this is an initiative of, uh, the president of the Ulster County School Boards Association, Rob Kerneth, uh, who represents Antiora. And, uh, and of course Krista Behringer, who has been president for, what, three years? And she is vice president this year. She's a scholar member of Ulster County School Boards Association. So, uh, I don't know, we all want to go to, you know, some of us can go to Ulster County School Boards, was it? Some go to, uh, potluck dinners.
I mean, is the potluck, is that set, like, there's no meeting after that, is that right?
Um, basically, I mean, there was quite a chain of, of emails today about that.
That's, that's too bad because those are, I mean, that Ulster County School Boards Association meeting, it's really to showcase what the district is doing to other districts and counties. And it's too bad that we'll have to, but I'll do that.
I mean, I can, I can reach out to them tomorrow and see if there's an alternate date that they might be able to...
I don't think the administration really does it. I think if this is...
It's a big, and it's a big endeavor. It's a, it's a project.
I think a lot of the faculty and staff do this.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think that, that, well, the Ulster County School Boards Association, I don't think there's any district... Well, I don't think that, for the Ulster County School Boards Association, I don't think there's any district that's gonna have its entire board and maybe just bring out at least a few people from every district, which hasn't happened a lot in the past.
Mr. Parnas, what time was the potluck?
The potluck, I think we're still narrowing this down because there was something here from four to seven.
So Ulster County Schools, it starts at six thirty.
So maybe we could grab the first hour and then we'll be.
You know, we'll be open.
Okay. So when I get some dates from Reverend Childs or some of the others, I can put together a schedule. But if you have any other suggestions for any place to reach out.
The Mill.
The Mill. There, and there must be a person at the Ulster Defense, because you, you did help me set that up last year. Who I can speak with, Diana Witten.
I have her number. I could give it to you. I don't need to do this.
Just let me know.
New Pro always has, the New Pro.
New progressive.
New Progressive always has.
I'll follow up with some phone calls.
Is that one of the ones that you were going to talk to?
We move on to the consent agenda?
Do I have any volunteers for October 5th, or do you want me to wait and email?
I assume we will do that.
I mean, usually we do two-hour shifts.
I can't, I can't do Thursday night because I have, I have a choir rehearsal, so I'd be more happy to do. We don't have a competition that day.
Where?
What time are we?
The farmer's market is usually nine to five to two.
Even if we did it ten.
Yeah.
Or I might be able to do that.
I can drive that far, so I would be willing to still do it.
I will send you my.
Consent agenda? Anyone who needs a consent agenda? Motion to accept the, oh, well, first of all, is any, are there any resolutions that, or any board member we're about to remove from the consent agenda? Did someone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Are there any questions about any of the items that we're looking at? No comments, no questions. I'll call. If you have a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The consent agenda is unanimously adopted. Do we, I think we have one or two. Old business? One item of old business that we've talked about before is the business, committee or business. As NISBA. So in the library for this meeting, for today's meeting, is the 2019 proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions. The, I think the deadline for proposing amendments to that is September 22nd.
It was the twentieth.
The twentieth, yeah, the Friday, the twentieth. So we have a board meeting on the 18th. So we can make this part of the agenda for the 18th, September 18th, and give our instructions to Mr. Spicer or Mr. Ryan?
Well, in the past, what we've done was they reviewed them prior to, and then they let us know if there was something that they wanted to change.
Yes, so that, we, we would keep that same protocol. So it's, it's 38 pages. If anybody wants to have it printed out, it's going to be due in paper. If Camille can arrange that.
Just send me an email and I'll put them for you.
And so it doesn't take, sometimes it doesn't take a lot of time to go through at the, at the pool meetings. We'll see what, how that turns out.
I will tell you, we were one of the few boards that actually reviews them. When you keep getting up to make amendments after the second time, they don't.
Our members.
They really don't follow rules of order.
I do, but it's, I noticed in reading them though, and I just would like to call people's attention to considering whether or not it's the job of NISBA or school boards to promote whether something is going to be legal or illegal. It just, it's, I don't know, the vaping thing, there's a lot of now reference to advocating for making certain things legal or illegal. I'm not sure. But.
Well, I think it's, you know, the, the membership gives the association direction as to what advocacy they want to do. And that's before the legislature. So that's in regards to passing legislatures. Is there another old business?
Well, I was just wondering, but it was written a board about ransomware that has affected some of the districts. I was wondering.
There was one district, I didn't know it was there, I could think they were hacked.
Today. So what did, are you immune to that?
Um, I don't think anyone's immune to that. We actually, Mr. Johnson did ask a question back in the summer, I think, after a few districts were hacked, and we do have pretty substantial insurance coverage around any theft of, of our, our actual assets. But, no, I mean, we have a great firewall, we have a good system, a lot of the things that I know make people crazy about our systems are the things that keep us safe, things like, you know, not being able to get wireless everywhere you are, or teachers not being able to plug things into our computers, not allowing home printers, or, you know, some of those kind of things, staying away from certain, let's say we're staying within the, the Microsoft and Dell, you know, kind of applications that are institutional applications that are managed well by our people instead of having some of the other things I know people like or think are more creative. Those are the kind of things that Gary really, and his team has really put in place that seem restrictive, and they are, but they are also protective in, in protective measures for our district. So, but as far as immune, I'm not gonna, I would never make any such a bold statement. Because hackers are getting smarter every day.
I understand. Like, you say, you say we have insurance, but will we eventually cover any possible.
I mean, if we, if we had, if we had money stolen, you know, those kind of things, we would put, I mean, so as far as, you know, if we, they shut us down and couldn't, and we couldn't access our student management system and we'd be an open school, there's no money, there's no insurance around that, I mean, we just would be, we would just be, well, there is insurance.
It is?
There's, but we'd still be, you know, kind of having not open schools. So I don't know if that would be insurance to cover the ransom. Which can be substantial. I believe I read that Schenectady School this week was out for several weeks with a, with a ransomware problem. Yeah, it's there. I mean, the problem's there for everybody. Mr. Olson, will they cover our ransom?
Yeah, totally, yeah.
Up to a certain amount?
It's over here.
We don't want to let, we don't want to make a public. Mrs. Sherry, could you delete that? Okay, any other old business? New business?
I actually have two things. We met with Dr. Pedalino this morning about one of them, and it's the condition of George Washington Elementary School, and that we need to be on top, that there are things there that have been wrong for 10 years, things that have been wrong for five years, but there are things that affect our students. I, I feel like those kids are in a building that is from a third world nation. And I invite any of them to walk through, and I took 60 pictures when I went through that building, and I was very, very disheartened that we have children in that building.
Well, that's something you should really bring to facilities, and I would actually defend Mr. Clapper and say, there's been extensive work done there. A lot of it's been infrastructure, so it's not immediately visible. But I don't know what you're referring to, but I think that's something that should go to.
There are, and I think that when we look at the, the facilities walkthroughs, there are, there are lists of things from George Washington that, that need to be done. I know, I mean, there were a couple of things, I was there yesterday, there were a couple of things that I looked at that I was surprised to see as well. So, you know, we have, and, and I've spoken to Ms. Libiano since she's taken over, so we have new leadership in the building. We're, we're going to, Mr. Olson and I met about this today, and he's been speaking with Mr. Clapper. There are some things that need to be done.
Right.
I think we've done, I mean, we have invested a lot of money into that building around a lot of the insurance. I think there's, there's pieces that need to be, you know, looked at, and I think there's stuff that we can get done.
Right, and there were some things that actually were addressed after the last walkthrough. You know, Mr. Clapper can give you a list of them. One of them was painting the auditorium that was done. Not the ceiling, you know, the ceiling tiles need to be addressed, but the auditorium is painted. I know that there have been requests to paint out the room, and that's, that's a problem we have district-wide that came to. That's something, we're going to come up with some kind of an idea for how we're gonna do that. And it's something that I know facilities have discussed with Mr. Olson and electric panel and all. So that. There are some issues with the electrical company, and, you know, things that we have are really under air purview that should be taken care of. I know that. I don't know what you're referring to specifically, but that's something we should.
And there are some things that are unsightly, that I think are more unsightly than necessary. They spoke, I mean, those are things we should be able to take care of very easily.
Right, a, a window that's been broken in the building for four and a half years, and they've boarded up from, and you can see it from the outside of the building, and four and a half years is long enough to repair a window. Paint that is peeling to the point of, but, but it's more than just painting, because it is peeling to the plaster. That's a plaster building, and that's got 1951. I'm concerned about lead, I'm concerned about a lot of things in that building, because I love that building, I've worked there. But those people and those children should not be in that environment. And that, that would be a major concern. And I do, I'm, I sent my pictures to Priscilla, so that, Priscilla, so she could see them. And we both met, and Dr. Pedalino was more than happy, because he had his own pictures also. But that is one concern. The other concern I have, I think, and I hate, I would never have said this 20 years ago. I think we need to start looking at putting metal detectors in buildings. I think that, that would be a directive from the board.
Again, again, I think that's a discussion that should come through, see.
And we started it, and they, the statement there was that they were looking for a directive from the board, and there's money out there now, and I, I can't be reactive. I want to be proactive. Our responsibility is to the children and to the staff in this district, and I know probably you don't agree, but I went through metal detectors every year for the last 24 years, and I got to tell you, every student felt safe in those buildings. And, and I just, I want our kids and faculty to be safe, and that's, and in this day and age, and this clientele of what we have going on in this country, I, I feel my job as a board member is to protect every single one of those individuals.
Well, I think we still needed to do more research.
And I don't disagree, I, but I think we need to start discussing that, as awful as I think it is, because I think it's sad people need to be discussing.
I think Dr. Pedalino said at the last meeting that he was going to present to the board a, I don't know if it's a synopsis or a summary or a study of issues on both sides of the question. Is that right? We, actually, you and I said that. And I think there's, there's, first of all, I would say that the safety, the Health and Safety Committee or the School Safety Committee, they don't need a directive from the board to start looking into something. That could easily be something they decide they take on as something of their, of their own, which would be a really appropriate place for that, for them to come back. But we can, I, I will work with Mr. Olson and Mr. Parker over the next, you know, couple of weeks and have a conversation about where we are with this and what maybe the, the safety committee can, can do. Again, you know, and maybe this will make some more people interested, prepared for the meetings, that we worry about if we're talking about something, you know, substantive like this. So let me, let me have that conversation with Mr. Parker and Mr. Olson.
Well, all right, and we had the discussion several times in the previous meetings for the last five, six years about. But we always felt there was no need for that. As of yesterday, I would say, you know, I mean, I don't know, yeah, if you have changed that last year or so, but as Dr. Pedalino mentioned that once, we have that need to start investing money into metal detectors, so starting 45, 45 in the schools, there's reasons like, you know, I mean, that would be like a last resort, you know, eleven, start 45, 45 in the schools, you know, and putting guards around the buildings, you know. So far, we haven't felt there was a need. So.
We need to look for further research.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's, we have to, we have to serve the community as well.
I just called that Suzanne.
I, I understand the concern certainly, and I think everyone around this table, everyone in the community has the same concern. My, I have an additional concern though about fortifying buildings, as you said, Mr. Michael, and giving us a false sense of security, because I don't know that that would be the answer. And that's why I would like to hear what the best practice would be, because I think that there might be other things that we should probably do that may affect, you know, be real secure. But I'm not saying no to it. I just think that sometimes when you have these armaments or, you know, or these metal detectors or those kinds of things, people say, oh, well, I'm safe, but that's not what makes you safe. So I just would, and it's a huge amount of money, and it just does change the character, I think, of the, the culture. And so I, you know, I'm not saying no, I certainly share your concern. But I just want to be certain that it would be in the best interest of the community to go forward with something like that, because maybe there's something else that we should be doing that we're not doing, that just doesn't, you know, look so obvious, you know. Maybe there are other things we need to do.
I, I, I agree with Susan, and in that, and I think it needs to be said now, everybody in this room is desperately concerned about safety. When I was school principal, I told our, our teachers, safety is job one, job one. We'll teach, we'll set a wonderful community, but we have to keep all the children, all the people safe. So everybody is on this board right now because we know we want to keep our children and teachers and community safe. Having said that, I would also agree with Nora that the best way to pursue the whole conflict is through safety and, through the safety and the facilities committee, because you can rehash all the data, all what works and what doesn't work, all the details, and bring in an expert. I don't think we can do that tonight.
Pardon? I wanted to say, I mean, safety is a good, is always a number one concern, but also the same.
I wanted to say, I mean, safety is a key is always number one concern, but also the same level discussion about kids, you know, teenagers today. Smoking or vaping. The last year, we've seen a great reduction of smoking from the kids, but now we're excited despite with the vaping, that's another big, great concern that we should be looking into. Because it, you know, mental health is more important than anything else.
I, I would point out that districts that are doing it now are doing it taxpayer, basically, non-impactive, because there are grants. And there are all kinds of grants for reasons. Number, just, number, every one of the schools has metal detectors. Every one of the school staff has a vestibule that you have to be hosed in through if you're coming in outside in the day. And I hate to say it, but I think we're to a point in society that, and it doesn't just happen in violent areas, because my aunt lived in, um, Colorado, and where it happened, and her daughter was in school. So I, I, I just think we're to the point that we have to discuss things that we don't want to discuss and that we don't want to do. I don't want to do it either. I didn't want to go through them. But I, I do think it's time.
But I don't, this is the end of the program right now. And we need to do research for some money.
Right. And, and Dr. Pedernio agreed to do that.
So we will make sure that the safety committee is rejuvenated and discusses it.
Just need more people there, you know.
There were only four, what, private facilities.
Another thing about the business, I know this sounds cheesy, but on Facebook, they had a very cute idea that some, not cute, but wonderful idea, where they were taking, um, excess food and they were wrapping it like in those clamshell kinds of things, so that kids could actually take it home. If it was additional. And I just wondered if we could, if there's any possibility. I know we had this whole discussion about food safety.
We've, we've, we've worked on that over the summer. We actually have a plan that we're going to put in place for shared tables that meets all of our requirements. That, so, so Ed and Ms. Rolson and food service people came up with a, a, a new plan around having shared tables and doing it in a way that was, that we were able to make sure, you know, we didn't have milk there for three hours and those kind of things. So we're going to be putting that in place this, this fall, um, with the, with actually it's going to be, it's going to be manned. There's going to be someone there at the shared table to monitor, you know, the things that are going on. Mr. Olson want to add to that?
Well, it should have started today, um, in the other school, and, um, the shared table will be sort of still within the, uh, offices of the kitchen. So it won't be outside the kitchen, so the food that people don't want will be put on it before they leave the serving line, so it stays right there. If someone wants to take something, they can. With respect to bringing it home with them, I think that's up to them.
Okay.
But I thought, like, in that line, they have to take every certain stuff.
They do, right.
So then that doesn't make any sense if at that time you're going to say, I don't want that.
Well, we can make people eat things.
Right.
But we have to make them take things, unfortunately, by law.
But they're not leaving the kitchen.
To get, so, you know, they take, you know, it's a locker versus, uh, excepting, they have to take at least like three items or something, or five. But we can't make them eat them. So if they're not going to eat them, they can put them on the shared table.
So they pick it up in one place and then.
And they're.
Oh, my God. This is a regulation that they have to pick it up and put it on their tray, but there's no regulation about what they do with it after it's on the tray.
Right.
It beats throwing it out.
Yeah.
It beats throwing it out.
You don't want someone that's going to be eating it.
Well, I applaud you that you, you know, this was addressed before, and it said like, well, I don't know if we can do it. But I applaud the administration for looking at it and then coming up with a way that can help kids that needed to be able to do it. So whether it's putting it on one tray and taking it off the other one, if it's happening, it can happen, that's great.
Any other new business? Board member analysis?
Well, everyone spoke about it, but again, the pre-plate program, that was just so exciting to me to, to see how that has come to fruition. To watch all those children and look like the nine nations. And it, it was really great. And I, I looked at the staff and they looked like they were kids. They, they were so excited to be really kids. And it's just great. And I think that the things that has been accomplished by this board often goes unsighted. But that is one thing that we should be reverend proud of, because it really will impact the lives of those children and make a real difference. And so I appreciate it.
Well, I thank you, Reverend Charles, for the work that you did. Sponsoring and supporting people for, and Dr. Pedernio, so the work that she did.
And you did.
I think the entire, you know, the entire administration. It's going to work. One way or another, it's going to work.
Eric, please don't forget the rumor of their time donation of.
Oh, yes.
Your old classes.
Any other announcements? Public participation, any member of the public would like to address the board, they may do so.
I'd like to just say a couple of things. One is I laud your coffee and conversation program. And last board meeting, we had two people who were a little discontented with the staff-student ratio. That's the time to address these issues, because discontentment is a way of snowballing and gets disproportionate. And the other thing is on the safety issue, um, is that restorative practices is a safety issue. And, uh, and your men, your, your efforts at wellness, mental wellness is a safety issue, from my experience with breaking a circle.
Thank you. No need for another executive session, so. You intend motion to adjourn?
So.